According to Zoom, it is high noon. I will call to order this May 11th special meeting. At noon. So the first order of business is the Town Hall Meeting Room Large Meeting Room Video Conferencing System. So in order to look at the. Comparison, I will share my screen. Everybody see an Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, so. Here you can see Joyce was able to sort of break it down into some basic buckets. As you see across here, and then these are the two. Here's UCA Tech. Here's Litchfield Stereo Design. The couple of places where there's no numbers. So. Here, the rack. For UCA Tech Computer for Litchfield Stereo were both sort of they weren't quoted. And it was noted that they weren't quoted in the two quotes. UCA Tech quoted one TV versus two TVs, but we did break that out. So it was showing two TVs. And then this miscellaneous was. I think it was just some. Wiring like covering the wiring or. Minor stuff. That. I think it was just additional stuff that not necessarily like Joyce didn't ask specifically for that thing to be quoted. So. If you. And we do need at least two TVs so that we have one large TV in the front of the room. And then there's one on the wall. You know, halfway back because the room is so huge that we really will need two TVs. So if we. I mean, it's easy enough to plop in here. That I think we would just take the the quote that Litchfield gave us so that we can look at two numbers that are. Same for same. If that makes sense. They gave us. UCA Tech wrote in the quote. We recommend a card, but because there's so many different options and. You know. Quality. Of cards. They didn't give us a number. So that's why there's no number in there. And I think they wrapped the power distribution into their equipment, and that's why there's no it's not separated out. So if we were to. Plug in. That. Here. So it's the same thing and then plug in this into here. So I'm just gonna make these different colors so we remember that they weren't part of their original quote. I don't I I'm gonna not add this one because I don't know if. This if they included the power distribution. In their quote or not. And I don't think we should include the miscellaneous because that was just specific to Litchfield Stereo Design. It's up to you guys. If you want to just plop those numbers in there. It makes no difference to me. So that's what the. The two and then. Because electricians are so hard to find these days. Joyce, do you have even a. Even an hourly average hourly rate for labor? Maybe something that we've in the recent past have.
I don't at this time.
Okay. So if we were even put in $2,500 for the electrician.
I've got a few questions. We received an email. At least I have. I have. I printed all this out here. And I think it was the UCA Tech. Vendor and all the equipment I added it up from what was sent to us. And that was 4,494. So when it says video equipment, you could tech 2,2005 99. Oh, I see. That's the plus equipment. Okay, I see where you got that. So all those microphones and everything. That was part of that email.
I think that's under the audio.
So in order to do this in a comparative way. The video is the video.
Yeah, I say. I see that break.
Audio rack.
Yep.
Power distribution, network labor.
I see. And then there were at the back of the document, there were two TVs, one for 1,397 and one for 2,197. So when you first put this up, we just had TV number two up. And. And only that the Litchfield Stereo has has much more expensive TVs than what was given us here. What's the difference there? Are these different TVs? Are these? Different systems?
No, are these from Litchfield Stereo? Oh, I don't know.
The two TVs are identical. But the UCA Tech is saying it's. That they're cheaper than. Litchfield. I don't. I'm not quite sure where the 4,000 came in or the 3,000.
This one.
Because the actual TVs themselves. Were 30 basically 3,828 from Litchfield County Design. The other stuff that came with it was.
Weird.
Display mounts and things like that.
So sorry, I just want to make sure that nothing weird happened with my. With the spreadsheet.
Yeah, and in the emailed quote, which is not in the Google Drive. So probably the next time we do this, I would probably. Ask that maybe this go to the Google Drives the public can see. But what I see in front of me here is a Samsung 75 inch. QLED. 60B series for 1,397 so. And if. If we go, I mean, that's the lower one. The other one is 2,197. It's the same Samsung. But it seems to have.
Right, it's got a higher refresh rate, which we definitely want. So that's why she put in the 2200.
Yep. So do we want? I mean, what TVs do we want? Do we want a $4,000 TV? Do we want a $2,000 TV? I'm just looking at the quotes in front of me here.
I don't. I think. The prices are likely changing so quickly. I think that what we've identified is that we need a very large TV likely and, you know, an 85 inch TV for the front. And then a smaller one for the side. I really would like to focus on this. Here. We can, I mean, we can spend hours talking about. Each component, each tiny piece. I think that we need to look at the big picture. We need to get up in the helicopter. And look at the big picture of which of these quotes works for us. And. Because there it's likely going to change a little bit because. We all know what's happening in the marketplace with audio visual equipment. So I think saying, you know, do we want to buy a, you know, 85 inch TV for 4,252? No, we would definitely like to find one that's less expensive. And we'll work with whichever vendor we work with to make sure that we get the best price that we can. This is a quote. Remember it's a quote.
Okay. I mean, I prepared for different numbers that was given to me. So I'm just.
So what was different from what you got?
I'm just telling you, there are two TVs and the email I got is right here.
Right, so this is the Litchfield Stereo quote. Had. Quoted two televisions. Which is that.
Yep, and the UCA Tech, I mean, you just.
One and we went through that, right? All the red is what. Each of the vendors did not quote, but we're plugging in so we can compare apples to apples. If you want me to take this back out, I'll take it back out.
Not apples to apples.
Okay, so you gotta tell me. I'll take it out. Coming out.
Now, hold on, Jean, 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 hold on. UCA Tech, the two TV prices don't include. Anything else. It's just the TV. And they say in their quote. Items not enumerated are not included. So the numbers for Litchfield Stereo Design are the TVs plus. Those numbers are the TVs plus. Cables and wires and brackets to put them on the wall. What's UCA Tech gonna use? To get them on the wall.
So that would be additional.
So you know, I I'm totally disappointed in the UCA Tech. Presentation here. So you know, you. You're looking at. A wide variety of gaps. You know, it should. It should have everything in there. It doesn't. Everything that they would be responsible for, they should have had in there.
And just, you know, what my point of view is that, you know, I got two TV quotes in front of me. You know, the one, the one is pricier, but it's it seems to be a higher quality. 2,200. And with your with the little matrix you put up there, I mean, TV number two, you had 220. Could we not put 220 for TV number number one? That's all.
No, because that's going to be a larger television either way.
They're both the same size.
Okay, all right. Yes, you want two different sizes. That's true. Okay.
The. The two TVs are both 75 inch TVs.
Yeah, if we wanted two different sized TVs from UCA Tech and I'm looking at two TVs that are the same exact size. If we want two different ones, then they should have provided us with different sizes.
Because in the UCA Tech. What I what I said already was that UCA Tech quoted one television. That there the the two images that they provided, you can see in the in the explanation. Let me get there. Hang on.
The television isn't.
Television. A television is required to display the meeting to the public. Television size, see chart below for recommended size distance. Televisions vary widely in price. 120 HC is refresh rate is recommended. However, the size and quality of the device is a decision left to the town. The television should be 86 inches according to the size chart. I would recommend at least 72 on size with a refresh rate of 120 HC. So they only quoted one television. All they're showing there is here are the two options.
Okay.
This is a cheaper option. This is a more expensive option. The only thing that's different is the refresh rate. And if they were still in their quote. They they put one television. The reason why at the beginning of the meeting, I suggested we add in. A number for that. UCA Tech quote was because I feel we need two televisions. So I was just trying to look at the final number to see how it would change it if we went back to UCA Tech and said. We want two televisions. Because again, I we need two televisions. That room is very large to sit in and try to see everything from the front.
True.
So Joyce, the so one, one thing reading over this again last night that I realized was the. The Litchfield Stereo quote was for the Zoom Room product. And it occurs to me that we don't. Always. When when we hold meetings, we hold them Zoom. But when there's a lot of meetings that I participate in that are not Zoom that are like at the state level. They as a. Government. Use Microsoft Teams. So do you know if on their the hardware that Litchfield count? Sorry, Litchfield Stereo is. Quoting, can you? Run other. Products through that, or is it just the Zoom product?
I don't know for sure. I would assume you can run other products, but I would have to verify that.
Why would we need to?
Because if we, I mean, for the flexibility that you would, you would want to be able to. You'd want to be able to have run anything under there. You would want to be able to go browse on the Internet. If if you were having a. A meeting and we went back to, you know, plain old in person meetings, but you wanted to. During the recording, you wanted to show something, you know, a website or a document from. A website out on the Internet, you would. To have something that you can only. Do one task with. That we're spending, you know. $20,000 on. You want to have that flexibility. Makes make sense to me.
Well, you should be able to run pretty much anything through the computer.
So it this that.
I don't think that's.
The quote for Litchfield Stereo is a Zoom product. It's not a. An AV. It's not AV equipment that we're running Zoom through.
I would ask Jimmy if he has any input on that.
I think we need to ask the vendor who's giving the quote.
And how much did you put in for labor and the electrician again?
I put in 2,500.
And do we have any more of an idea about funding? Dar had said that some of the funds from her line could be used for this.
Believe Barbara said there was 13. Little over 13,000.
And of the two quotes, the total UCA Tech is the that's the the cheaper version there. It's 18,000. Is that what it is? So most of this can be covered. We know. Except for 5,000.
Right. Just looking for them. To get that info.
It's 13,333. Barbara sent an email on.
Me too. Thanks.
Okay. What's the total for Litchfield again? Jean?
Put that back on the screen.
25.
Yeah, be helpful if we could all see this.
Hang on. So do you want to see for sake of conversation? Because we have to have something to run it off of. We and. If you agree that we are going to need a second TV. I can put those add those two in.
Yeah, if we feel like we need a second TV, I would add that.
So what do we want to put in here? Do we want to? You know, take it halfway and and do 3,000 for this would be the larger of the two TVs.
Put 3,500. I don't know what an 85 inches.
While the Litchfield Stereo Design had an 85 inch in there for 3,800. Put in 3,800.
And we'll put the same thing in here. For computer. Tablet or the. Piece of hardware to run everything.
What is the rack?
It's a cart. Something that.
As a post to the wall mount?
No, it would be a, you know, like a. Similar to like a server rack. It'd be like a cart to house. The various. Components that need. Rather than just putting them on a table or on the floor.
Why? Does UCA Tech not have that?
So I I mentioned before, they put in their quote that because there's so much variability that. In the type of. In a in a cart per se, I guess that's a good generic term. That it could be anywhere. What did he write in there, Joyce? Was it 800 to 2,000, something like that?
800 to 2,500.
So if we put in the same thing.
They put down, then the their estimate was 2,000.
So do you want to plug that number in here?
That's what they wrote. Their estimate was 2,000.
I just Googled what a Samsung 85 inch TV would cost. And it's very similar to what was given. On the email here and I see I see Walmart at 1,600. So so I would say let's let's go for 3,800. It may be less. I can't imagine it being more than that.
So the Walmart 85 inch TVs are necessarily. When you get into the logistics of the actual television. They may not have the same refresh rates.
Oh, sure.
So.
I think, yeah, I think 38 is reasonable to just plug in there for.
That's fine.
These purposes.
So in either case. We won't be able to fill the entire line here. I mean, we've got what 13,300. Where would the rest of the funding come from for this, do you think?
A budget transfer or.
Okay.
If we get approved for ARPA.
Okay. And there is an ARPA meeting today. Where we are going to talk about the presentation to this Board of Selectmen. So.
And ultimately. We have the choice. We have the decision.
Yep.
To do with the ARPA funds anyway, so.
Very true.
However.
Is there a sense of the folks in Town Hall who will use this fairly frequently? Is there a? You know, do people side with UCA Tech or Litchfield? Do we have a sense of this?
I don't know. And it's, I mean, it's really bigger than that. There's. All the boards and commissions. There's.
Sure.
It's really for.
For everyone's gonna use it. Yeah.
Yeah. Not that anyone's.
Sure.
You know, opinion is.
Yeah. Ease of any sense of ease of use, one or the other? I mean, are they the equal in terms of that? It's one more complicated than the other one system.
It seemed like Litchfield had a had more. Did they wrote in their quote, I believe, Joyce, that they would do some training? Is that correct? I just want to leave the screen share up and not browse around all over the place. It did not print it out.
Okay, so with Litchfield, there's some training, but with UCA Tech, there is not.
Right, they can provide it. It would be, you know, an hourly.
Sure.
And I think, you know, we would need to come up with. You know, a short. Two sided laminated. You, you know, when you walk in the room, here's what you do. And then I did include the owl just doesn't add on on the bottom there. For upstairs.
For upstairs. Rufus, what do you think of that? You were you were talking about the owl last time.
Yeah, I think we should have one. I don't think commissions should be required to haul in their own equipment if they're going to meet in a small meeting room.
So if we're going to provide. That hybrid approach, we should get a. A TV. So that you can have the. Audio visual on both ends. Because the owl just gives it to you on the one.
Yeah.
And. end. So just to equalize this out, I'm gonna put I'm all right. Oh, I did. So good when that happens. Um, second work. Yeah.
The second one should be 29.
Oh, you're right. What happened here? Oh, it took the wrong. Thank you. Or there we go. Thanks, Rufus. So keep in mind, this does not include, you know, things like our Zoom license. We have an administrative account that has a number of licenses that are all paid licenses. You know what that annual bill is, Joyce? Or monthly, and then we can
I think it's about $200 a month.
That's for all our existing, this would increase it?
Separate things.
So that doesn't change.
No. It may change because we may have to add more licenses, but we'd have to look at that. Right now, it's 200 a month. Right? That's what you said, Joyce?
Yes.
So the licenses are just the people who can host the meetings, right?
The licenses are the, the software piece of how you run the meetings, right? And we have, what is it, 10, Joyce?
Yes.
So one of those 10 would be running any town meeting anyway, so. Whether it was you or Joyce or whoever. So I don't see that would change much.
Right, no, you don't get a license for the hardware. It's the user that has the license. The board of finances assigned a license. Park and Rec is assigned a license, that sort of thing.
Are we sure that two TVs are needed in that meeting room?
Yes. We will regret and we will regret not getting two TVs. You sit in that room. It's a very, very big room. If you think about, you know, when you go to a university or, you know, libraries at the larger high schools, places where there are big meetings and big gathering places for people to receive. You know, attend a meeting or attend a you know, workshop or an, a lecture. For a room that size, you see the, you know, you'll see, often you'll see actually one of those mosaics where it's, you know, four TVs that make a much bigger screen. But in our case, it will be a large screen television at the very front. And then it'll be mounted with an articulating arm on the side that can, when it's not in use, it can sit flat. And if it needs to come out, it can come out a little bit. But you also have to remember, so the, from the front wall, right, which is on the post office side. You'll always have the the big tables, right, with, with space for people to sit behind those tables. So that's probably a good eight or nine feet. And then there's always, there's, I don't know, what is it? Probably another eight or 10 feet between the front of the table and the first row of chairs. So you're talking, you know, you're still the first row of chairs. It's still many, many feet to the um, TV that the, that many of the people would be looking at. So when you start to go in the rows backwards, unless you're showing, you know, a big, one single big image. Like an Excel spreadsheet would be really tough to read from even the first row. And so having that second TV on the side gives a, you know, a closer view to a lot of the audience. And it's, it's a tough room for AV in general because the ceiling is so high and the room is big and there's nothing to, you know, consume the sound.
I would like to ask Jimmy if he has any input because he has more experience than any of us having done this in Roxbury. If he doesn't mind. Putting his two cents worth then. Before we have to make a decision. Jimmy, do you mind speaking to this? From your experience? Because maybe he's not there.
Hi, sorry, I'm here.
Oh.
Sorry, I was at an email. What can I help you with?
I was just wondering what through your experience or, you know, I mean, some of the questions that we've had, you know, Glenn wanted to know, can we get away with one TV or two? Um, is this realistic or are there problems with a Zoom system versus the logic tech system? Or advantages to either one? Um, it
I'll just, I'll just tell you what, what Roxbury did. We have, we have an 86 inch TV mounted to the wall. Um, with a camera on it and we have a Zoom room setup. So any Zoom meeting, they can just come in, tap the start meeting. You're off and running to host other stuff like Gene was asking. You, I just bring my laptop in. And then I can host a Teams meeting or a GoToMeeting or stuff like that. Just by using, by using the Zoom feature to share my screen, I can then host another meeting.
Is your meeting room the same size as ours or is ours?
It's roughly the same size. It's a little bit different makeup. Um, the two TV setup, I don't think is a bad idea. I would probably put the second one on like a movable cart. So you can kind of have a TV mounted on the wall for board members to look at. But then if you had a budget hearing or something, you could put the budget on the movable TV and move that around the room depending on the setup or how many people are there. Because it is, like Gene said, it is pretty far if you're sitting in the back to try to look at a spreadsheet or something. So I don't, I don't think that's a terrible idea, but you maybe don't need to go 86 on a cart, you know, the second TV doesn't need to be the same size. We don't have that setup. It's something we'll probably look into in Roxbury. Um, but cabling and making it all work together will probably be a little more difficult. And Ucatuck and Litchfield can probably figure that out. That's what I would recommend. Um. You know, we have a giant TV. We got the Zoom setup. I have a big rack to control it all. We also put in speakers and a sound system. So we have microphones and lavaliers. So if it's not even just a hybrid meeting, it's just a meeting with a bunch of people. They can connect with the microphones and host town meetings. Um, I'm just looking at the sheet now. So we have a rack. We have all power. We ran network cabling. Yeah, it's, it looks like it's pretty similar layout to what we did here. Eight months ago.
Thank you.
Yep.
So what do we think? I mean, two, two TVs does sound reasonable. Do they both need to be mountain, mounted? Can one be put on cart? Do we want to mount both?
I
If you mount both, you're stuck with that. I don't know whether or not putting one on the cart gives you more flexibility for different types of meetings, different sizes, crowds.
So if we, I mean, putting it on on the wall, on a mount, um, from a safety standpoint is definitely I think a best practice. I worry about, you know, anything, I mean, putting a large um, computer monitor on a cart, you know, they're they're wobbly. Um.
Well, they, they can be, you can create a strap system and put weights at the bottom of the cart to prevent.
Yeah, and
But, you know, you, you that, that's just something to think about. Flexibility.
At least in the short term, like, would it not, A, save us money, B, make it more flexible if we went with a, with a bigger TV on a mount on a wall? And just start with a smaller one on cart? And if it, and if it is too shaky or if it doesn't work to the way we want, we could then put that on a wall eventually. Right? But going backwards the other way is a little bit more difficult.
Right.
I, I, I think for purposes of our conversation, we need to get to the point where we make a motion and make a decision and then we can get in the weeds with the installation and, and all that when we get a little further down the road. And like to, um, make a motion. So I will make a motion to um.
So before you do that, Gene, one last question on the power distribution.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know what that is.
I, I
It looked like it was just a UPS. Right, Joyce, in the quote, it was a big uninterrupted power supply that everything gets plugged into.
Um. Oh, the power distribution. So why would Ucatuck not need that?
I don't know. I don't know if it was built into something else. I have no idea.
I, can I just say one thing? If we, if we went with a TV mounted on a wall and if we go with a TV that is on a cart that can be moved, would we not then be able to get that up to the small conference room upstairs and use that with the owl? So that could save us $2,000? We would only need
I would not recommend and I, I I would not recommend putting a, having a TV on a cart, putting it in the elevator, bringing it upstairs. We're gonna end up with a broken TV. We should do this the right way. Do it professionally, have the two TVs downstairs mounted. Spend the extra 2,000 bucks, put a proper TV upstairs. And do this the right way. Think about so you, you always, when you're hiking with a group where you're, you're doing a trail rescue, there's a golden rule. You only hike as fast as the slowest hiker. So we need to design this, design the system, make decisions for this system for, for every type of user.
How many, how many meetings are in the big room? During the year?
Joyce? You have any data on that?
Because the big meeting room was primarily used by Landuse. The upstairs meeting room was used by most other boards and commissions. So they each met monthly and very rarely is there overlap where there's multiple meetings.
So I, I mean, I, I really don't see the harm in if you do have a TV mounted on a cart using the elevator for 12, 15 times a year.
No, it would be more than that.
Be way more than that. Twelve times a year is one commission.
So P and Z inland wetlands, if they each met twice a month.
Oh, okay. All right, I see. Land use.
Great.
And you, you know, having something that large and unwieldy is is asking for someone, you know, worse than breaking the television, what if someone gets injured? We don't want someone to get injured from having to, you know, take a TV from downstairs and move it upstairs because we wanted to save $2,000 on a 20-plus thousand dollar project.
I mean,
For the proper, we're, we're the municipal government.
I mean, I, I, I know people can get hurt and it could be, you know, it could be damaged, but, um, but, but I am a teacher and I have moved TVs my entire career. I mean, we have TVs on carts all the time. So, I mean, it's, I, I do it with great regularity, so.
Right, but that's you, Glenn. You're, you're working in an environment.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I do have some experience with this. Um. I, I, just one other question. I mean, both of these quotes go over 20,000. And we need to move funds for this perhaps. So do we need to take whatever we decide to a town vote because of this? I would go more, I would feel comfortable, more comfortable if this were under 20,000 if we can get it to that. Just a question, even if we, even if we move the 13,300, if we go with this and we get no other funding, are we going to the town with this? For a budget transfer.
If, if you take the lower of the two quotes and round it up to 23,000, that would be, um, $10,000 and what's required to go to a town vote would be over 20.
Because we'd already be using the 13.
Well, we used the 13. Okay, okay, just checking. Okay. Good.
Other questions or thoughts?
Got no more. Got no more.
So in crafting a motion. I'm just trying to write up a motion that makes sense. Motion to spend up to $23,000 on hybrid system equipment.
You're not just spending it on the equipment, Gene, you're also spending it on labor.
Okay, so on hybrid system project, what would be a good way to word that?
Hybrid system project that includes part, that includes equipment and labor.
Is that enough information, Joyce, or do we need to spell out that we're gonna do an owl?
Well, the owl is an add-on. Neither of the companies quoted that, so I don't think you should include that in this particular item, but that's just. So if you want to include it, you might, you might want to add it.
So language like motion to spend up to $23,000 on a hybrid system project using Ucutec as the vendor, um, you don't think would be enough?
For the big room.
The big room.
And.
So break it out.
The 23,000 includes purchase of an owl and smaller television for the upstairs small meeting room. Or for, yeah.
So this is a special meeting and on the agenda, it says town hall, large meeting room, video conferencing system. Should we add, can we add to the small? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, do that separately.
Maybe separately, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So just revise it to 20,000. Up to 20,000 for.
So might say something like motion to spend up to $20,000 on hybrid system project using Ucutec as the vendor for the large meeting room. Joyce, are we missing anything here from this language, proposed possible language?
Sounds fine.
That has the labor as well.
Yep, and it includes, um, and Joyce will handle the electric, you know, the electrician piece. So I will make a motion to spend up to $20,000 on a hybrid system project using Ucutec as the vendor for the large meeting room.
Second.
Thank you. Hopefully, there's not too much further discussion. Any other thoughts? Rufus, you have a thoughtful look on your face.
No, no.
Or you were looking through your bifocals.
He's trying to block the window behind my head so that.
Oh, you get black, you get washed out. Yeah, when, there, that's perfect. Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion? Thank you. We will get moving on this. Next item is approval of the May 20th town meeting agenda. So under this item, uh, we have a couple of things to consider. So I received an email from a resident asking, um, what the requirement was to make a ballot vote happen on the budget. And I forwarded it to Darlene and she reached out to town attorney and, um, the, the, a resident or a citizen would propose a petition. And so we've, we've established what that process was. Um, so I'm just looking to, to see what the board's thoughts were on, um, having a referendum happen instead of the vote at the town meeting on the 20th.
What's the cost differential?
I don't, Barbara didn't have the, um, all the costs in from the school referendum.
So if somebody makes a, a motion to do it by ballot, is there a vote by those present to then, and then that pushes it into a referendum?
So someone at the meeting on the 20th could request a secret ballot at the meeting. And so the ROVs would have to shift into doing a secret ballot versus a raised hand or a, you know, an open vote, if you will, or a raised hand vote.
But this is a request, or is it, does it have to be an agreement by those present to do that?
I would have to check.
You're talking two different things there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, yeah, that's what I'm trying to explain. So one is a ballot vote at the meeting, but what I'm referring to is a referendum where in the agenda, and this is part of the reason why we're talking about this now, and the agenda that we're about to approve, we could, the board today or a petitioner could request, um, a refer, the, the vote go to a referendum. So the same exact thing as the region one referendum that was held a week ago to, yesterday. Where the voting booths are open at the town hall from 12 to eight, and people come into the building to vote. And then at the, and that's, the ROVs have to be there and all of their, you know, the support and everything they do for a vote, and that has to be held and within, there's a bunch of parameters, um, it has to be held within a certain number of days after the town meeting. I don't know, Joyce, I think I already asked you this question. Do you know the last time that happened? Or if it's happened in your tenure, Melissa, anybody have a?
I think Washington does it that way.
No, but I mean, Kent has.
I don't think it's ever done that way.
Right, 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 but has it ever been done? You, it has to be a, you know, a change in what the, the normal custom is for what we do, but Joyce, do you have any recall of that happening?
I do not. I was the one that made the motion at the last year's budget to make it into a ballot, and other people had asked, but it didn't pass. To do a ballot, not a.
At the meeting, right.
To do a secret ballot, so meaning everybody in the room gets a piece of paper and they write their vote. Goes up to the front of the room, so two different distinct things, and that can happen. That's not, I mean, I don't know if that's something that we can force at a, like today, I'm really talking about the referendum piece. The secret ballot at the town meeting on that night is a Robert's Rules, simple, that's, you know, that could happen. I'm talking about, do we want to send this to a referendum where rather than voting that night on the budget, um, it goes then to a, um, you know, and an election type, a voting booth type scenario, a referendum is what it's called.
I think that the voter turnout would be interesting to question how many people voted.
No, I think, I think it's, um, an interesting concept because frankly, the numbers aren't, aren't that great at town meetings anymore. So you have a very small number of people making decisions.
And that, I mean, that's been the tradition, that, that is what we see in general. I, in the many town meetings that I've been to, going back a long, long time, you don't see, unless there's a very, um, specific, um, you know, hot topic item where a lot of those stakeholders would come to, you know, have their voice heard.
There are fewer people coming to those meetings. It could be for any number of reasons. We might want to do a referendum to get more people, perhaps more people within participate.
Or we research and find out, you know, I mean, it's, it's true. We might get more, we might not.
Yep.
And we're spending thousands of dollars
Right.
to hold a referendum.
Right, so at the last, um, and I just, I looked at the little tape on the wall at the region one referendum last week, um, there were 68 people who voted. And we have had, um, you know, I can't remember how many it was that we had at the last budget, you know, last year's town meeting, but it was, there were a lot of people on Zoom, a lot.
So I think we should stick with what we're doing.
So if it goes to referendum, Rufus, you mentioned, uh, you know, that, that costs money. How, how much, how much money would that cost and where does that come from? And do we have that?
Yeah, I don't know how much it costs. Like I said, Barbara did not get all of the documentation yet, um, from the region one, that would be our frame of reference, um, because that was just done, um. So we don't, we don't have those totals in, but.
While you look at, at what the, um, registrar voters gave us as estimates for the budget and I think it went up several thousand dollars over this year for next year because of an additional vote. And so the referendum is an additional vote. Thinking it was like $3,000 or something by the time you're done, something like that. I thought their overall budget. And I, I, numbers don't always stick in my head right, but it was like $8,500, something like that for the three votes that they were anticipating for next year, that part of the.
So this town generally does not do referendum, referenda?
Right, this format is a town meeting and a vote at the town meeting.
At the town meeting.
So some of the questions that Darlene asked Randy, were the board of selectmen can take the vote to referendum without a petition filed. This should be discussed at the 511 board selectman meeting. And this is from Darlene, when approving the annual budget agenda, the action of approving this action does not change the agenda warning for the annual budget meeting, correct? If the board selectman desires to send the budget to a referendum, they must remove it from town meeting at least five days prior to the town meeting. The town meeting then becomes informational, more in the nature of a public hearing, which we just had a week ago, as we discussed and set the date of the referendum.
So the date of this meeting, whatever we do, is the 20th, it's Friday of May. Um, if we had a referendum, when would it have to happen?
So, um, according to the statute, the time, sorry, was someone? I thought I heard somebody. I was looking down my paper. Uh, the time for referendum by petition is not 21 day, not, it's not 21 days. Sorry, I'm just reading what Randy's answer was here. Actually, Darlene, the time for a referendum by petition is not 21 days, it is to be tell, held, and then it's quoting from the general statutes, not less than seven nor more than 14 days from the town meeting. The scheduled town meeting is still held in order to, one, set the date of the referendum, and two, discuss the budget, and three, to consider any other questions on the agenda. The proper petition, 200 eligible voters or 10% of the registered voters, whichever is less must be submitted to the town clerk at least 24 hours before the town meeting. I don't know if the statute is different for if, the board removes the, you know, moves it to a referendum. But for today's purposes, what we would be doing is taking the annual budget meeting and sorry, I'm just finding. We have to amend what Joyce sent us. In number five, correct, Joyce? Just removing the and act upon.
Yep.
And then we would need to add, to schedule the date of a referendum to the, the agenda. And number, so it would be all of the ones where it says to consider and act upon. If we were moving it all to a referendum.
Yeah, I'd be curious if we don't move it to a referendum. Since the high school vote was a referendum, and you say there were 68 people, if we don't move it, and we have a Zoom meeting and get the numbers from that, that would give us a good indication whether or not. by moving to referendum. It, there's much difference. You're doing one the same process. I mean, we could look at down the road. I I don't know. Melissa had said that Washington now goes to referendum. I don't know whether that has improved their numbers at all. But Gene, you said the last, last year, there was quite a number through the Zoom. If, if the difference is six or seven votes, I mean, if or fifteen votes. Um, I'm not sure that's worth spending the money for referendum on. If a referendum only got sixty eight votes for the high school portion of it. I don't know whether the, you know, I something to think about.
Would a referendum vote be easier to do than a Zoom vote? Because we've had issues with Zoom votes. Would this make the process easier? For all those.
Completely different.
I mean, you're, you're bringing in all the registrar voters, you're setting it up. It's an all day process. People have a longer timeframe if they're going to come and vote. I don't know.
Okay, so more time.
I mean, overall, I think a lot of, a lot of towns have found recently that the participation levels haven't been there. Town meetings, but sixty eight votes is not a good participation turnout for a referendum either.
Gene, Debbie has a question.
I had Debbie.
Um, speaking as your local tax collector. If you do this and the vote is to cut the budget off, start again with the budget. You're increasing your timeline potentially after July first. Um, what are you going to do for money if you don't have a budget July first? I mean, there are things you can do. I'm not saying the town is able to pay its bills, but it is a whole nother process that requires a whole nother set of of things that need to be done, just so you are aware of that when you're talking about money and time and I don't understand the need for a referendum, I guess. If people want a paper ballot, let them have a paper ballot. If the budget gets voted down, then you know where you are. But a referendum will just slow that process down.
So just as a follow up, um, question in this email thread. Um, Darlene wrote your, your answer addresses if it's a referendum by petition. What if it's a referendum authorized by the B O S? Does that then allow the consideration of the mailing of absentee ballots if the referendum is scheduled outside the three weeks notice? And Randy wrote back, hi Darlene, it would. However, the statute is somewhat ambiguous. It seems to in, it seems to intend the same seven dash fourteen day timeline. However, if you add in the five day prior rule for removal plus three days, the selectman move removing it eight days before the town meeting. Then the twenty one day minimum would allow for absentee ballots. So it depends on when the board of selectmen sends it in relation to the town meeting.
I think we should have thought about this several months ago. I think at this stage of the game, we stick with the town meeting that we have scheduled. And if we get very poor turnout, maybe then we think about a referendum, but the referendum should have already been held if we're you know, we, we would have to look at the whole budget process. So that we had enough time. If we do a referendum and if it gets voted down at the referendum or, you know, that it would have been done. So that everybody would have a chance to regroup and come up with round two. I don't think that's doing us any favors this year.
And I'd like to add that, um, you know, for this meeting, I was all prepared to talk about TVs and hybrid systems and I did all the research on that. Uh, this is a big issue and I, you know, I, I kind of saw this before, but I'm not prepared really to to change things very much. Uh, I mean, if this is how it's been done before, without the referendum. I
I did need to make you guys aware of this because it was a request and there was, you know, some lengthy research and back and forth. So I wanted just to make sure that I was being, you know, transparent and visible with you all.
Yeah, there's, there's pros and cons to either here, but, um, but having heard this now, like, I mean, there's a there's a lot going on. So, um, I'm so that's where I stand.
Okay.
I think, I think we should move forward with the town meeting.
Okay. And so the other, the only other, um, piece I want you to, I, I think we need to just, you know, talk about for a moment is where the numbers are going with the latest wave of this Omicron variant and the numbers went up again statewide. Yesterday, it's only gone up. I think we're at a ten day, just increase, increase, increase. Um, we have, we're now, I want to say maybe have twenty five home kits left. We have had a lot of people come in asking for, um, home test kits. Um, more people coming in and asking for masks. Every day I hear about more people, um, you know, with, with a positive case. And, and you know, the numbers are a little bit more muddy because of the home kits. Those don't get reported up to the state, so they're not in the statewide numbers. Um, so I just want to ask, you know, what the, the temperature of the board is for moving this um, from a hybrid in person and Zoom to an all Zoom meeting.
I know that you're right, the numbers have, have gone up quite a bit. So we want people to participate. But if it's hybrid, they're still participating, correct?
Right. It's some in the room and some on Zoom.
Right.
We do start to, so we had the chairs just from a logistical standpoint, we didn't have the chairs three feet, three feet apart. They were, you know, a little bit closer than three feet. If we moved it to three feet, the number of people that were in the audience, I believe it was twenty one or twenty two at the hearing last week. If we went to three feet apart, it would be many, it would be far fewer people that could have a seat in the room. And then you get to the conundrum, which I haven't even gone down. The rabbit hole of this conundrum is, let's say the room is set up. You know, we want to do three feet. So the room is set up for twenty five and we have thirty five people show up in person. So there's not enough seats for people to be there in person. Do we just throw more chairs in the room? Do we make the meeting start late and create another, um, somehow create another room upstairs in the conference room? I, I don't know. Um, so that's just another wrinkle that is always sort of bopping around.
Is it possible to create more space in the other room?
A few. If we're doing three feet apart, it's probably another six, eight at most. But we have to, you know, plan and get technology and get another room set up because that room would also have to be connected to Zoom. So, you know, it's more a lot more planning. If we go all Zoom, then everything is Zoom. We're all on Zoom. The entire um, vote would be a, you know, whether it's a open do, um, Zoom poll, or if it's a, an anonymous Zoom poll, if somebody asks for a oh, you know, like a paper ballot, a secret ballot, rather, we just switch to an anonymous poll. So that's a quick, literally one button you click and it makes an anonymous poll. So you're not, you don't get the record of each person's vote. So that's, that's easy.
Debbie has another question.
I'm sorry, Debbie, go ahead.
Um, by, I don't think it would be that easy because you have to qualify people to vote at this.
Yep.
Have to have checkers.
Yep, we've got that all figured out.
Well, not in the scenario you just said where everybody would be a Zoom.
Sure.
For everyone.
Yep, we did that for the, um, what was it?
But, but that was not a secret vote.
But it
Someone knew how people voted. So that's not a secret vote.
Right. But in Zoom, you can click a single button and create an anonymous poll and nobody knows. There's no record of it.
Okay. I, all right, won't argue.
That's how it's, that's how they do that on purpose, just for this. All it shows is when you're, when the, when you're doing the vote, all it shows is the, you know, it's a yes, no question. All it shows is you know, how many people are answering yes? How many people are answering no? It does not display for the administrator nor for the public, the person by person um, votes. It's an aggregate. Just like if you were to push it through a tabulator. We have a new person who just joined, a Zoom user. Can we have that person identify themselves just so we can make sure that they're not going to Zoom bomb us? So back to the, the question. Do we want to, um, in light of all the COVID cases increasing, do we want to move to Zoom?
How many, how many people were in person at that last meeting?
Um, twenty, I think it was twenty one and then it was thirty one or twenty nine, something like that on, um, uh, virtual.
And that was, that was just last week.
Yeah. And, and you know, I will say that people are very used to, um, even in the setting of the town meetings and the, um, you know, the annual town meeting, we now have done two January town meetings via Zoom. We send out, you know, all those same stuff that we would, we had sent out before. So instructions with everything.
Is there, I mean, I I can't wait to get back to in person stuff, but I think people want to feel safe. So is there a way to limit people who show up? No.
I mean,
We're seeing, you know, you look in the local news apps, we're seeing things starting to get postponed. There was just some big, um, concert at the Xfinity Center that just got postponed. Um, somebody's was it a Daffodil Festival, some big town's in person outdoor event was, is being postponed. It just, it just worries me, especially with, we don't really truly know the number of positive cases because of the home kits. And it's, I think it's great that having home kits gives people more opportunity than ever to test whenever they want. That is, that is convenient for them. That, you know, gives them much more peace of mind. And enables them to test their family and stay home rather than oh, well, what do we do now? Do we send the kids to school? Nobody's got, um, you know, we were, we think we were exposed. Nobody's got symptoms. We, you know, there's no, the test site isn't open for, you know, they hit the wrong day and they have to wait three days for a PCR. This enables people to find out quicker, um, but none of that data is is reported. So, I mean, the numbers can only be, we know the numbers are higher than they are being reported. Just worries me.
Well, it's always going to be a worry, at least in the short term. Um, so we had, we, we did have people who wanted to go to the meeting last week. I probably would think that some people would want to be here physically for this one. If we, if we think they'll be, if, if we think that there'll be so many people that we either have to, we can't turn people away. Um, but if, if we think that it's going to be so much that we need an extra room or two, that's, that's, that's a problem. So, um, if that's what we think, then we should probably go all Zoom. But if if, if we can handle those people who want to show up and, um, and if we can do that safely, then we should probably go in person and Zoom. If we could do it safely. If we can do it easily. But if we think that we're going to get a, a, a large group, a larger group, if this is going to be a problem, then we should all go Zoom.
Yeah, I, I truly, I think it's more about what's the best way to, you know, we have to think about the needs of every person and what's in front of us as far as where we are with this wave.
And we can't require masks at this stage of the game. We encourage them, but not.
Yeah, we requested people wear a mask. Not a lot of people did wear masks. And that's, I mean, this is obviously, this variant is highly, highly contagious. They say it's more contagious than Omicron. We have, we had a big, big stack of, um, masks and test kits at the door. And a lot of people took test kits home with them. Not a lot of people wore masks. What's the appetite? What's the appetite?
So. I'm sort of thinking that. Maybe we should go all Zoom. Not that I want to, I really don't want to, but. I think the purpose. To go in all Zoom is to. Get as many people. That are comfortable doing it. Um, and I know, you know, I would hate to have the problem of. Getting thirty, thirty some odd people coming or thirty five people coming. Not having them. Being respectful to other people there by putting on a mask and then you.
And we have a, a cluster in our.
Cluster.
That traces back to the town meeting. I think we have the ability to, to help the public stay safe and. Hopefully this will be the last town meeting that we have to do this for, so I will make a motion. That we hold the annual budget meeting on May twentieth via Zoom.
Second.
Their thoughts.
No, I'll reiterate, I hope this is the last time we have to consider this as well, um, and. Yeah, we wanna do this safely, and we wanna do this easily, and quickly, so, um. I understand, yep.
So, um, let's take a vote, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you, so the main part of this is, um. That we need to approve the, um, agenda for the annual town meeting. So I will make a motion to approve, approve the. Annual, the agenda for the annual budget meeting on May twentieth. To be held via Zoom. One second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 So just as a piece of housekeeping, Barbara, um. Needed me to pass along that, um, for you all, for the Board of Selectmen. That there's, um. We will need your signature, um, on the notice that we have to publish. And so we'll need you to come in by close of business tomorrow, um, and just see. Um, see Joyce, correct Joyce, they would come to you for that?
Yes.
So you'll need to come in and, and just sign the, that document.
Are you going out to lunch after this, Joyce, or? Uh, leave it on your desk, I'll be down in a few minutes.
Alrighty, uh, next item is public comment. I'm gonna scan the room. And my chat go. You don't see, I can see everybody, I don't see any hands up, Debbie, you came on camera.
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, the Board of Finance is going to set the mill rate after the town hearing. So will the Board of Finance be meeting in a hybrid meeting? Or are they going to go all Zoom, or don't you know, but I do know they wanna set the board, the mill rate.
I do not know.
Okay, that's, because the mill rate is part of the process.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other comments? I don't see any hands up. According to Zoom, it is one thirty four. Thank you Rufus, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Thanks, everybody, for the good conversation.
Have a great day.